Hammond City Council, public hearing, February 11th, 2020. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman David Turrio.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Public hearing, none. We'll move into our regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wells. Councilman David Turrio.
Present.
I'll ask you to stand for our prayer and ask Councilman Andrews to lead us in prayer tonight.
Most gracious loving Father, we just thank you right now. Giving you glory and honor and praise that it do your name, Father God. Thanking you for your darling son, Jesus, who died upon the cross, that we too would have access to the free of life. Father God, if you had said in your word that we love our neighbor as we love ourselves. Father God, I actually continue to bless our police department, our fire department, as they continue to serve and protect us in our streets. Actually, continue to bless our administration, continuing to keep our minds focused on our position and our focus and our job. Continue to bless our council, continuing to strengthen us together as we continue to serve the people and the citizens of the city of Hammond. Keep our eyes open and our ears to it, but we will be able to see where we're headed, Father God, to do the right thing. We just thank you right now that everything will be done tonight decent, order, and pleasing, and in your sight, where you will get all glory and all honor and all praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Now, for our pledge, I'll ask all veterans and active military to render the proper salute.
Pledge and reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, for our reports, council. Anybody have a council report?
Yes, I have one.
Councilman Andrews.
On February the 20th, at 6:30 PM, we are, District One will have our first town hall meeting. It'll be here in the council chamber on February the 20th at 6:30. Also, on February the 20th ninth, District One will host a day at the Temple of Parish African American Heritage Museum for our youth in between the hours of 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM on that Saturday. And also, I would like to acknowledge one of my citizens in District One, Ms. Mary Adela Jackson, who will be turning 100 years old on February the 14th.
Oh, Valentine. Nice. We threw her a parade, aren't we?
Yeah.
For her birthday.
Sure.
Very good. Anyone else with council report? Ron, Sam?
I just wanted to ask a question real quick. That flood update study for the flood zone, is that, when is that guy coming back to talk to us?
They were gonna be, they were scheduled for tonight, but they were worried they couldn't finish their cost estimate in time to get that for you to look at prior to the meeting. So they, then we looked at the next meeting, but due to our shift in schedule, that won't work either, and since we're doing the Dangerfield Award that night, so they're gonna come that first week in March, that first meeting in March.
Anything else?
One other thing I left off. I'd like to thank Mr. C.C., Mr. Bobby, and the mayor. Couple of weeks back, we took a ride throughout the entire district, made a list of things that needed to be addressed, and there was a very informative ride, so I think we're gonna see some things taking place. I'd like to thank you guys for taking that time out on this Friday morning to get that done.
All right. Mayor, mayor report?
I was at the Regional Planning Commission today, and as I said earlier, Jeff Russo, who runs the Planning Commission, had mentioned to us that they're gonna come forward and try to help us out with the traffic study in Oak Covington. So that's some good news. Also, was approached by one of the engineers, the environmental assessment on 3234, which is University Avenue, which goes from university to the back of the airport to industrial, is complete, and they should be having some public meetings, hearings with us to let the public know what's the next step, if any, that'll go along that corridor to making a full loop around the city of Hammond, and hopefully loop the water system around the city of Hammond. One of the issues we have with water system at times is we have dead ends, and the perfect system would be one that just keeps revolving, so there's no dead water. If you notice, sometimes we're opening up hydrants, especially to the east side, letting water out to keep, to keep it from stagnating. Also, the parade is this weekend, so everyone, please, the weather should be good. Come out, enjoy yourselves. Should be a good time.
And that route has changed, I heard on the radio.
We did have a problem on West Thomas, and so we're gonna go ahead and bring it down. What's it gonna be? Spruce instead of hazel, two magnolia up by the, we're gonna turn by the yogurt place, right?
Spruce to Thomas.
Yes. Spruce to Thomas, gonna turn left by Custard and go to its normal route and back to the southeastern. So it should be a good night. I think it rains tonight, tomorrow possibly, so it should be clear for the parade. Come on out and enjoy. Sales tax is interesting to me. We always seem to get it, well, it is, we get it a couple of months after the fact. So usually, the first part of our fiscal year, from July till November, we operate somewhat in the red. November, December takes care of us, and this year, once again, it did. Right now, we're at 487,000 in the black, and then now, from January through June, we hope that we don't lose many sales tax dollars. And as we did this year, and you were questionable about not going up 2%, we'll see what happens at the end of this year as far as the numbers, but as of right now, we're $187,000 in a good position.
Very good. Is that 24% higher than estimated in December? Is that kinda, is that like outrageously good, or is that on kinda standard what the city does?
We'll consider it outrageously good.
That's good?
It was a good one.
But it's good. Consider it compared to last December.
What was it last December? Y'all know?
I don't have that off the top of my head. Jenny's here. Jenny, any idea?
I don't know.
I mean, I, that was a year ago, so, but 24% is over, that's over budget projected, so typically, like the mayor's saying, that's what happens, is in November and December, we have very good positive months with Christmas shopping and everything, then we have very lean months from January really till April or so. Some people will get tax returns back and go out and spend those, but overall, this is in a good, good spot for us.
Good. All right.
Thank you.
All right, now, for our minutes of January 28th, 2020. Need a motion, please?
Make a motion that we accept our minutes from our February, I'm sorry, January meeting, January 28th meeting, I'm sorry.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman David Turrio.
Aye.
Resolutions, old business, none, new business, number one. A resolution to approve Margarita's Mexican Restaurant located at 610 Palace Drive, Hammond, LA, to sell high-low alcohol on premises. The owner is Margaritas LLC. Jenny Wilson.
Good afternoon. This is a new little restaurant that's coming over by the mall area. It's in the spot where Shane's Rib Shack used to be, if you're familiar with that, and he's done all we've asked him to do. He's met all his inspections. He's up to par on everything. So we are asking for approval tonight. We do have the owner here, and we're gonna ask him to come up, and if you have any questions for him at that time, he'd be glad to answer them. So, Mr. Louise, I'll have him come up now, please.
Hello, guys.
Hi. Can you state your name?
My name is Luis Ortiz.
And?
And your address?
Yes, your address, please.
Address, 16 Palace Drive.
Okay. So this is for alcohol? Are your employees all trained in knowing the drinking age and ID?
Yes.
Anything like that? You got all those rules covered?
All those covered, yeah. Making sure everybody need to be asked for ID and, you know, making sure the ID is all right, and you're not selling a minus coming with a fake ID, so it's happened to me before, so it's why.
Sure.
I make sure everybody's training all right.
Good. Is anyone here on this matter? Any questions or comments from the council?
Good luck to you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pleasure to counsel.
Make a motion, approve.
Second. Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman David Turrio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Good luck. Can't wait to try it out.
Thank you.
Number two, a resolution to approve Stop &amp; Shop Two located at 285 South Morrison Boulevard, Hammond, Louisiana, to sell high-low packaged alcohol. The owner is Vance LLC. Don't know if I said that right.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but that's good enough. Mr. Singh is the representative. I do not see him in the audience. He was informed to be here. I'm gonna tell you that it's a little like pack-and-go little place, like a gas station pack-a-sack. It's packaged alcohol. It's right next to Popeyes Chicken. It used to be called G's or Swifties previously, and it's like a little grocery store. And he has met all the obligations that was required of him. So we were asking for approval tonight. So I'm gonna leave that in your hands. He is not here. I don't know if something's come up or something happened. I can hang around for a little bit, if you want me to, and see if he shows up late, or we can approve it, or we can table it. So I'm gonna leave that up to y'all.
Did they have alcohol previously?
Yes.
The old business?
I think, I think they did. I think they did, but I can't say absolutely 100% sure.
Does he have other stores?
Yes.
So he's in the business?
Yes.
We've never had one where someone didn't come. Is it customary to pass it?
Yeah, I mean, if he's done everything.
He's done everything that we've asked him to do.
It's not mandatory.
And he know all the rules and regulations already.
He owns other businesses, yeah.
Okay.
So he's aware.
Is anyone here on this matter? Pleasure to counsel.
Make a motion, approve.
Second. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman David Turrio.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Ms. Jenny?
Yes.
Before you leave, I'd just like to recognize Ms. Jenny, she's retired on the 20th of this month. She's been with us for many years and has been the backbone to the department that she's in, collecting property taxes and so much more, and we're gonna be missed dearly.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Don't make me cry.
Congratulations.
Thank y'all.
Number three, a resolution to approve the Hammond Barbecue Challenge, Inc., to hold the 2020 It's a Smokin' Barbecue Challenge in downtown Hammond on March 26th, 27th, and 28th, 2020, lying within the boundaries of Southwest Railroad Avenue from 100 yards south of Coleman Street to West Thomas Street, East Charles Street to Hanson Street, Coleman Street from Kate Street to Southwest Railroad Avenue. Eric Ferris.
Good evening. Like I did last year, I'm gonna turn it over to Brian, because I'm training him to do, but I just wanna say thank you to the city of Hammond. This event is known country, over the whole country, countrywide. We get teams from all over the country, from California to Virginia and anywhere in between, and they all know Hammond because of how they're treated when they get here, and the fact that it's downtown and they can park and not go anywhere. So the fact that we always have a waiting list for people to come in is a testament to the city and everybody that does everything for us to make that, this a great event. So Brian's gonna say a little bit before we.
How many professional teams do you have?
Right now, without even trying, 44. I cut it off at 48. I'm going to Houston, after Mardi Gras or the rodeo, I'll pick up three or four teams at the Houston rodeo when they'll come. That's why I'm saving a couple of spots.
Appreciate all your efforts. You've been fantastic.
I tell you what, it's a wonderful time. After 17 years, it's still fun.
Wow.
Brian Shirey.
Do you need my address and name and all that?
Yes, please.
Brian Shirey, 19299 Country Club Lane, Hammond. Thank y'all for your time. Eric mentioned this is our 17th year. Our intention is to make it to 20, and then see where it goes. So we are taking applications actively for any organization that would like to mentor and learn how to do it. We don't wanna remove ourselves completely, but more of a rolling board type organization that can have some fresh blood that comes in instead of the old stale blood. So, thank you. Before y'all address the next few resolutions, I wanna say that, again, thank you to the city of Hammond. I know we invited all of you out last year. It was everybody's first go-around. I think all of you came out, I think, just to walk the event, just to check the event, see what it's about, and you do see people from 12, 13, 14 states, people who are big on TV and the barbecue world on cooking channels and so forth, that compete, and people come out to see those people, and it brings a lot to downtown Hammond. I will address that a couple of years, over the years, we've had some blowback from some of the downtown businesses, and we've done our best to try to evolve and work with them, and one of those efforts is something I'll show you here. We just made the rounds. Eric, Eric Ferris Hartboard along with myself made the rounds. We touched every business that is affected and dropped off one of these.
With all up Kate Street Railroad and down Thomas, went in, knocked on doors, gave this paper to them, and just reminded them that at the end of March, that, you know, it's coming, because we still get, oh, nobody told us it was coming, so.
So if you look, on the front side, it's basically a fact sheet, so feel free to share this with anybody that you're interested. We are a 501(c)(3). We've been doing, the first event was in '03. We've given over half a million dollars to local charities. That's our board. 55 to 60, he's pared it back a little bit. That's generally how many professional teams would come, but the rigs are getting bigger, and so to not expand our footprint anymore, he's having to make, take less teams, and we can actually then take the premium teams that are better for the, for the event and for our town. 55 to 60 local teams, chicken little, the kids can compete. We've added craft vendors last year, a year before last, live music Friday and Saturday. That's just some other stuff. Y'all know how to read. I don't need to read it. The main notes that I wanna put are toward the bottom. Note one, that teams on the east side of the tracks are the professionals, everything on the east side, those people are not passing out food. They are there to compete. They wanna win. That's what they do. We're the fourth event on this KCBS, Kansas City Barbecue Society circuit, starts in Pensacola four weeks ago, four weeks before. First week, fourth weekend in March.
Sergeant Lael.
Lakeland, Florida. We're always the fourth weekend in March, no matter what. Doesn't matter when Easter is, doesn't matter when anything is, always the fourth weekend in March, because we're on this national circuit, we're the fourth event. So everybody on the east side, they're serious about what they're doing. They'll visit with you when they're not doing their stuff, but, and they're real nice. You can talk to them, but don't ask for any ribs. Go to the west side of the tracks, and we have the vendors. That's where, most of the teams over there, they're corporate, they're local, they participate in tip-to-taste, bring you a stack of $1 bills, put a dollar in their bucket, they're competing to raise money also for the fundraiser for the charities, and they'll give you a rib or a pork sandwich or a piece of sausage or something. And then we also have a vendor which is next to the stage, that's the number two on there. The public can purchase food on the west side of the tracks, and immediately south of the stage, Hammond High Pro Start and Springfield Pro Start man a full barbecue kitchen. They sell plates, they sell little specialty things they make, all kind of food. The kids man it. We have some adult supervision, but they, but all that, the food is donated. They, their time is donated, all the profits from the beverage booths and from the food booth, and everything that's tip-to-taste, everything on, on the west side of the tracks, that's how we primarily raise the funds for this, that we turn around and give to the charities. Remind you, we are an all-volunteer board. We don't take any money. Everything goes back. We keep a couple thousand dollars just for startup for the next year, but we return 100% of it. On the backside of that sheet is something that we pointed out to all the retailers, all the businesses we've visited. This is the parking closure map. We instituted this last year. We're ahead of it this year. We're a little slower getting to them last year, closer to the event. We wanted to get out as far as we could to give them as much heads-up and time so they could plan schedules, plan whatever it is they wanna plan around these closures and the dates. So those are the measures that we've taken.
Some of them are taking vacations.
Some of them say, good, I'm taking my vacation that time. We said, well, I hope you take your vacation and you come enjoy the barbecue.
Right.
So that's basically all we have. Wanted to share all that with you.
Notice sometimes when you go to these events, they film you and it's on the barbecue channel. Any chance of that?
Yeah. They had, I had a call from one of TV stations, one of the film crews. Hammond is one of six national events that would pick to do the Snake River Farms Challenge, which is Snake River Farms of the American Wagyu Beef Company, and actually, they're donating the meat for the tip-to-taste Thursday night. That's their kickoff event Thursday night. Gnarly Barley is doing all five beers. We're pairing that with this Snake River Farms meats, so they're donating the meat. So they, the TV crew that's coming in is basically for that. Not only do we have the Snake River Farms, we have the Smithfield. They gave us $3,500. Snake River Farms has given us $1,500 to bolster our purse money.
This is the dinner, the Friday night?
The Thursday night, Thursday night kickoff. Friday night is the dinner. We feed the cooks and the judges that come in, which all y'all are more than welcome to come again and enjoy dinner and meet the teams and meet the people that come in.
Are you sold out on Thursday night yet?
No, yeah. We hadn't started advertising it yet.
How much were the tickets?
$50.
$100 in advance.
Right.
It's for the kids. It's all for the kids.
Stinkin' for yourself.
But that's, I did, I did get a call from one of the film crews that would wanna come in. I said, of course, and then, so they're gonna, they'll work out the logistics on that.
Last year, we had a guy from Australia come in.
Right.
And did some documentary stuff on our event.
And watching that video, I learned I need to lose a little weight, because my belly sticks out a little further with my suspenders on.
It's all a good thing.
But it was all over the Australian, it's Australian podcasts that he put on, so Hammond was featured in Australia at that time. I have to get that podcast and let y'all look at it. He's a good guy.
Y'all have any other questions for us?
I'll open up, anybody in the audience wants to, who's here for this matter? Councilmembers, any questions?
Make a motion to accept. Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman David Turrio.
Aye.
Number four, a resolution to approve the Hammond Barbecue Challenge, Inc., to sell alcohol on the city's property lying within the boundaries of Southwest Railroad Avenue from 100 yards south of Coleman Street to West Thomas Street, East Charles Street to Hanson Street, Coleman Street from Kate Street to Southwest Railroad Avenue for the hours of 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM on Thursday, March 26, 2020, 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM on Friday, March 27, 2020, and from 10:00 AM to 11:30 PM on Saturday, March 2nd. That should be 28th, excuse me.
Yes.
March 28, 2020. Pleasure to counsel.
Motion, motion to approve.
Second. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman David Turrio.
Aye.
Tony, are you able to fix that, just from what I read? Okay. Number five, resolution to approve the Hammond Barbecue Challenge, Inc., to obtain a waiver of the city of Hammond Open Container Law within the boundaries of Southwest Railroad Avenue from 100 yards south of Coleman Street to West Thomas Street, East Charles Street to Hanson Street, Coleman Street from Kate Street to Southwest Railroad Avenue for the hours of 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM on Thursday, March 26, 2020, 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM on Friday, March 27, 2020, and from 10:00 AM to 11:30 PM on Saturday, March 28, 2020. Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to accept. Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman David Turrio.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank y'all very much.
Good luck this year.
See you next year.
Thanks. I hope to see y'all.
Yeah.
Fourth weekend in March.
Yeah.
Got it.
It's gonna be good weather. Y'all are pretty strong. Get some good weather. Use your influence, please.
If y'all are around at 4 o'clock, we'd have the team meeting. I can introduce you in the, into the team meeting, but definitely for 7 o'clock dinner, y'all come out and say hello to everybody.
Say your prayer.
Yeah. Work on your prayer.
No, I was gonna say.
I'll call you tomorrow about your house.
Thank y'all.
Number six, a resolution authorizing contract change order number three for sewer system rehabilitation fiscal year 2018, LCDBG, City of Hammond, Louisiana, project 31813 for an increase of 60 days. Charles.
This is the project that's been going on between Thomas and Palmetto, Mooney and Morrison. Majority of the work is complete at this point. What the engineer has done is identified some lesser severe repairs that could be performed. We are currently under budget, under the contract budget. We're actually way under the grant budget. So the thought is, rather than give those grant dollars back, there may be some reasonable repairs that we could do with them. So this gives us a little more time to kinda put all of that together. The current contract ends on the 19th, so obviously, we won't have another council meeting before then, so we want to get to you tonight. And once we have the details of what that change order will be, I'll come back to the council. There'll be no additional costs to the city. This will be entirely funded with grant dollars and budgeted match already in the project.
Anyone here on this matter? Questions? Councilmembers? Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman David Turrio.
Aye.
Thank you, Charles. Number, uh, final adoption ordinance, none. Introduction ordinance is set for public hearing. Number one, introduction and ordinance to accept final construction plans for the east portion of Commerce Street improvements. Accept dedication of east portion of Commerce Street and cul-de-sac and acceptance of one-year performance bond, letter of credit in the amount of two-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars in accordance with the planning survey of William J. Bowden, Jr., zoned CH and RM three, recommended approval by the Planning Commission. Tracy Schalace.
Hello, counsel. Um, we're asking you guys to introduce us tonight and, um, set it for a public hearing on the next city council meeting. I think it's on Thursday after Mardi Gras.
Yes, twenty-seventh.
So, we're, um, actually asking you guys to do three, three things here. Um, Commerce Street runs off of South Morrison Boulevard. It's near the Bond Eye Clinic, if you're familiar where that location is. Um, it's currently a dead-end street, and there's some history to this street, um, you have in your council packet there. Back in nineteen eighty-seven, the city council abandoned, um, the rear portion of this street. It was in very bad condition. I don't think it was constructed properly, so the city gave it back to the, the property owners on that street. So, we have a developer that wants to improve this street, um, and add a cul-de-sac at the end so you can have some through-traffic, be able to turn around safely and come back out. So, we're asking you guys to accept the final plans for that construction, also, um, accept the actual portion of the street and dedicate it. They're providing you with a performance bond for the complete cost of that construction. For some reason, if they don't complete the cost, the city can cash in that bond and complete the construction. And then, once they complete this construction, they will come back for a maintenance bond that you guys would have to approve and accept. And we're also asking you to accept that bond and that amount to cover that construction cost.
So, they're, they're doing the red, the red shaded spot. That's, that's where they're actually improving for the?
Correct. The first three hundred feet is actually city street. Beyond that is what was revoked. So, that's the portion that is privately owned, and they're, they're gonna fix that. It, it's gonna be drainage work, um, some sewer improvements. They found some things wrong there, um, in the actual pavement of the, the road itself.
It's gonna be a through street to the apartments as well.
Correct. So, the apartments currently go out on CM, CM Fagan. Um, they're gonna actually abandon that private road that they have, and, um, in turn, the apartments will exit out on this street. They've been in contact with DOTD, and DOTD said there is no need for a study. Um, they'd meet all the requirements for them, so they're okay with having that traffic go out this way.
So, they're shutting down that, that access?
Eventually, they will, yeah. The cul-de-sac is actually being moved, if you see on the aerial there. It's kinda offset.
Yeah.
So, they agreed to actually move the cul-de-sac and make it larger. Um, there actually are some eighteen-wheelers that do deliveries on that street and have a lot of problems with getting out, so this will help them, help mail delivery. I'm sure it's gonna help with fire and police and ambulance and all that.
And then, I guess the city would pick up the front part.
At some point.
Uh, to re, repair, I guess.
Yeah, it's, it's.
There's a few spots. It doesn't need a complete repair.
Yeah, looked pretty rough, uh, you know, when I went by there today, so I just didn't know, you know.
Driving in, there's some spots.
Yeah.
Right lane.
Okay. And these owners of apartments, that they're fine with having that access?
They're the ones doing the construction.
Okay.
They're paying for all this construction, yeah.
And the bond is there for a period of time till we decide that we accept the street in.
Yeah, has to meet the requirements, two years, and then after that, we take maintenance of it, yeah.
Yeah, once they start the construction of the street, um, they actually go through, um, Chuck will review everything and inspect everything, water, sewer, drainage. All those guys will be involved with the construction and reviewing it. They'll come back with approval letters saying they met everything, and, um, they have to provide core samples, all kinda stuff about the street, and they will swap out that performance bond to a maintenance bond, which we will hold for two years. And right before that two-year period, the city will go out and inspect again, make sure there's no failures, nothing going wrong, um, and then they come back to council to fully accept it, um, and give them back their, their bond. There's some, um, streets we're dealing with now in Providence Ridge that, um, they've, they've got some issues, and they're in that maintenance period right now, so we give them the option to fix it, or we can call that bond in.
Tracy, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
I know I talked to you yesterday. Uh, did they contact all the business and let them know what was going on?
They did, and let me give you a little history there. So, when they abandoned that street, all those property owners' legal descriptions actually went back to the middle of the street. So, all those property owners had to actually sign and dedicate their portions of that street.
They're very happy.
They're very happy.
And then, uh, I went over there too today, and what I saw, they actually got cars parking on this street right now. So, when it, when the street opened, I know they're gonna have a lot of traffic through there, so how the business gonna do for us trying to park the people that come to there?
The, um, the, the guy that's developing the street is actually gonna work that out. I think they, they improve one side of the street and then come back and improve the other one. They won't completely cut them off.
Yeah. No, I know how they gonna do it, but what I'm saying is, they got cars actually parked on the street today.
There's a bunch of, I forgot about that. There was a bunch. I don't know why.
Yeah, they had like six cars parked on there, and I actually counted the spaces that they had. Uh, they had like four spaces that was empty inside the first one, the first business, and the second one, 'cause it looked like they parked way down there to the second. So, I was just wondering about, uh, about the cars parking by the.
Yeah, they're not supposed to be parking at the street.
Okay.
You know, who handles that? I, I'm not, I'm not sure. Police or?
I know.
Yeah, so I, I. They, they will be moved during construction. I can promise you that.
Okay. And I wanna thank you too also for, uh, walking me through everything.
Absolutely. Uh, you're always welcome to come in advance and ask any questions, so we can explain it.
So, I don't have to ask my hundred questions a night I asked yesterday.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Anyone here on this matter? Any more questions from the council? Pleasure to counsel.
Motion introduced.
Second.
Councilwoman Menendez-Allen.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman David Turrio.
Aye.
Public hearing is set for Thursday, February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty.
Number two, introduction and ordinance to revoke an existing ten-inch, is that inch?
Ten inch, yes.
Ten-inch water servitude and accept, uh, dedication of a relocation of a ten-inch water servitude. Is that inch or foot?
Inch.
Inch.
Ten inches round.
Okay. Uh, requested by Palace Properties LLC located at lot three-A, one, A-two at Hammond Square Shopping Center in accordance with the survey of Acadia Land Survey.
So, you guys are familiar, we're getting a walk-ons restaurant. When they started doing the construction and the pad for this, they realized a water servitude would be, the existing water servitude is gonna be under the building. Um, not a good place for this ten-inch water servitude, water main that's there. So, they're asking, um, to abandon that section, which is the crosshatch section on your survey, and then accept the dark-colored area as a new servitude for water. And it was accepted by ordinance, so we're asking you to revoke it and then accept it again by ordinance.
And that's at no cost to us?
No, the, the, the mall or the developers, yeah, paying for all that.
Tracy, the servitude, I mean, the, the survey is ten feet.
It's gotta be feet. You can't have a ten-inch servitude. I mean.
No. Ten-inch water line.
Water line.
Servitude is ten feet.
We're revoking a ten-foot water line.
Yes.
Servitude, excuse me.
Servitude.
Alright. Don't need to reread that.
And I'm, it, it could be written wrong. I'm not.
It, it is written wrong, 'cause then two, two dashes is an inch, right?
Correct.
Right, so it needs to be one dash.
It's a water servitude, yeah, okay.
Oh, and it, and it happens to be a ten-inch line too.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Alright.
That's what I kept thinking.
Okay, 'cause on the survey, it's ten feet.
Yeah.
But the servitude is ten foot, so I'm going to, um, first, I'm gonna make a motion to amend this.
Yes.
To say ten-foot water servitude instead of ten-inch in all those spaces.
Thank you.
Pleasure of the council.[1754.54]